Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchise. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today. I repeat, no one is to approach today. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchise. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I am joined by Councilmember Abreu, Shulman, Carr, Ung, Hudson, and virtually by Councilmember Moya. Before we get started with today's agenda, I wanted to note that we are starting a new legislative session, and I look forward to working with each committee member on the projects we will be hearing and voting on. Today, we will hold hearings for five proposals. The first public hearing is a proposal for a mixed-use project in Brooklyn within the projected rezoning area of the ongoing neighborhood study focused on Atlantic Avenue in Councilmember Hudson District. We will then hear a proposal for another residential project in Flushing, Queens, followed by a proposal for a life science development project in East Harlem. The fourth hearing concerns a mixed-use residential project in Jamaica, Queens. The fifth and last hearing will be another mixed-use residential project, but this time in Williamsburg, Queens. So we have a full agenda for our first meeting with proposed projects in four of the five boroughs. I now turn it over to Subcommittee Counsel to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair. I am counsel to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or for those of you here in the chambers, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms to prepare and submit a speaker card if you have not already done so. And when you submit your speaker card, please indicate the project you are seeking to testify regarding. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the Chair or myself to speak. When you are recognized, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you would like to submit instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, please email it to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and the project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until it's quizzed by the Chair as Councilmembers may have questions. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you, Counsel. I will now open the first public hearing on LU 6, 7, and 8 relating to 962 Pacific Street rezoning proposal in Councilmember Hudson District in Brooklyn. This is an unusual proposal because it is seeking the rezoned property that is located within the proposed Atlantic Avenue mixed-use plan. This plan is projected to certify and begin the official public review process in just a few months this spring. Despite the efforts to comprehensively rezon this area of the city, the applicant is seeking an individual rezoning before the proposed comprehensive plan is finalized. The requested rezoning is from a manufacturing district, M1-1, to a mixed-use district, M1-4/47A, that will facilitate a mixed-use project with approximately 150 apartments. This project would involve the mapping of a mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoned area, which will require the 38 to 45 of the units be income-restricted. Applicant is also seeking a special permit to reduce the number of required parking spaces. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing us at landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to give the microphone to Councilmember Hudson to give her remarks.
Thank you so much, Chair Riley, for the opportunity to comment on this application, which, as you noted, is quite unusual. Between 2018 and 2022, at least eight individual development projects have sought rezonings between Vanderbilt and Nostrand Avenues, along Atlantic Avenue, and the corridors surrounding streets. Combined, these projects are projected to create over 2,000 residential units. However, this is a completely untenable way to plan for a neighborhood. This type of uncoordinated development in such a concentrated area means there is no comprehensive plan to ensure that the needs of longstanding residents are met. Everything from infrastructure, open space, safe pedestrian circulation, an economic development plan, and, most importantly, a thorough anti-displacement strategy that will allow us to build necessary housing without pricing out our most vulnerable neighbors. I'll remind this committee that this part of my district has seen significant decreases in black households, a trend that is true across the city but acutely exacerbated along this corridor. Over the past two years and during my campaign, I've stated clearly that this neighborhood needs a comprehensive development plan. It must not be rezoned in a piecemeal approach, project by project. And a comprehensive plan is exactly what I've been leading in partnership with the local community and the Department of City Planning. The effort to create a comprehensive neighborhood plan was officially announced in April of 2022 under the name of Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan, or AIMUP. And in January of 2023, my office kicked off an extensive community engagement process. We held 12 public meetings with over 1,000 individuals in attendance, including issue-area focus groups. The planned steering committee continues to meet regularly as the project moves forward. Based on this extensive community engagement process, the Department of City Planning put forth a comprehensive draft rezoning proposal this past December, and the formal public review of the city's proposal will start this spring. As you can see, a tremendous amount of work of community planning has gone into preparing a thoughtful, thorough plan for this section of Atlantic Avenue where the applicant is proposing its development project. AIMUP has made significant progress and should have a final plan in place by the end of this year or early next year. This process will yield a comprehensive rezoning, capital, economic, and residential plan, which is what this neighborhood needs. Despite the immense progress we've made over the last year toward establishing a comprehensive neighborhood plan, the process is not over. This spring, the administration will present its final proposal to the community and city council, triggering the ULEUR. This is a vital part of this process, and it should not be short-changed. The current application is seeking to get ahead of the final comprehensive plan. The applicant team has stated that its project is consistent with the administration's draft rezoning proposal, but this draft rezoning proposal is just that, a draft. The community and council may very well approve a final plan that differs from this draft rezoning proposal. I do not see why this applicant should be able to cut short my community's review of the comprehensive plan. The piecemeal redevelopment of this neighborhood needs to stop, and a final comprehensive plan will shortly be in place. I ask that the applicant support me and the community in completing the comprehensive and thoughtful planning of this neighborhood, which will ensure that proposed development projects are consistent with the final plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hudson. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
The first panel consists of Richard Lobel and Nadine, excuse me, Richard Lobel and Nick Labares.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Richard Lobel.
Nick Labares.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answers to all Councilmember's questions?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request@landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, please state your name or organization for the record before you begin.
Good morning. My name is Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC. I represent 962 Pacific Street in this matter, joined by Nick Labares, the project architect. With me as well are Nadine and Bill Osnar, who are the applicants here, as well as Kevin Williams, the environmental consultant. So we're going to run through the presentation and are happy to answer specific questions of the committee. As we look at the potential rezoning here at 962 Pacific, we note that this process did not begin for us in 2022, when the neighborhood rezoning was announced. And it did not begin in 2021, but actually dated back to 2020. So in September of 2020, this applicant submitted a pre-application statement for this rezoning. And while other applications went forward and ahead, ensuing over two years, this applicant was asked to wait several times. And so by the time that announcement was made in April 2022, this application had already been in process for close to two and a half years. And so the issue now with asking the applicant to wait, as we again are about to go through the materials, is that we know, because we've seen before through area-wide rezonings, that while they do reflect the goals of the community, they are not necessarily timely in producing housing. We look at the Gowanus rezoning right now, which was approved in 2021, and there has not been a unit that has been produced pursuant to that rezoning. There is excavation, more than half of those sites being built pursuant to that rezoning are being excavated, but there's no units that are online right now. And we're in 2024, and those units won't be online probably until 2026. So that's a five-year gap. And during that five-year gap, there's a housing crisis. And we all know it because we all see it, and we see people every day when we pass on the streets of New York City that don't have housing, and that the demand that's created from this lack of supply is directly affecting them. So while we understand and are respectful of the goals of the community and the stated goals of the Councilmember, indeed, we could not be more respectful, having attended every meeting with regards to AIMUP as well as of Community Board Aids Land Use Committee. We do feel very strongly about this, about the opportunity to proceed forward, not jumping ahead of the line, but after having been patient and waiting our turn to allow our application to proceed. Next slide, please. So what is this application? This application is for rezoning. It would rezone the existing M1-1 district for this site to a mixed-use district of M1-4R7A. The R7A residential equivalent here would produce a potential nine-story building with approximately 153,000 square feet of floor area, 150 dwelling units, of which 38 to 45 would be permanently affordable, roughly 8,500 square feet of community facility space, 19,000 square feet of manufacturing space, and approximately 8,000 square feet of commercial space. Importantly, as will be noted further in the presentation, the production of this mixed-use building fulfills many important goals set forth by the Community Board, as well as the AIMUP proposal in creating housing, in creating affordability, but also importantly, in recognition of Community Board Aids' longstanding efforts in terms of MCROWN uses, in creating good job-generating uses at the site, in creating an early childhood community center, which is nothing that has been offered or provided before by any of the other rezonings within the R7A district. This project area is currently located between two R7A districts. So as the committee will see, there is a continuity of R7A here that exists on several blocks, on multiple blocks, and this is merely filling in a gap in that zoning. The next slide, please. So the next slide is the zoning map. Tough to see here, and we're going to see it as we go to the area map, but basically, the R7A here is one lot amongst a number of lots, which is Zone M1-1 amidst a sea of R7A. But you can see from the circled area, again, residential zoning both on the north side of Pacific Street in this area, on the south side of Pacific Street in this area, as well as, of course, along Atlantic, and we can talk about each of those rezonings in turn. The next slide, I think, is very telling with regards to this area and what we see. So you can see this entire block front, and then you're able to see the area in the dotted lines. The dotted lines represent our site. And so to the west of our site, there's already a portion that's highlighted in red that has already zoned R7A. It was rezoned R7A in a prior rezoning, the Grand and Pacific Streets rezoning. But here, this would allow us to provide for R7A zoning on this site. And I think the next slide, the area map, really tells you the story extremely well because you can see to the east of Claussen what happened here. There's 26 lots on this frontage of Pacific Street between Grand Avenue and 200 feet east of Claussen. So in that over a block of lots along Pacific Street, there's 26 lots, and of those, 25 are zoned R7A, except for ours. So this is clearly not a case where we are introducing something which is not accepted, which hasn't been accepted by the area, by the Community Board. Indeed, what we're doing is providing something which allows for a context which respects the fact that the Community Board and the area and the council has already created R7A on 25 out of 26 lots. The next slide demonstrates photographs of the area, again, demonstrating that we are contextual within the surrounding area. And then I think that I would close my portion for now just with regards to some of the prior rezonings that were accomplished on the site and comparing our rezoning to their rezoning. So the next slide shows the other R7A rezonings in this area, how those were created. In 2019, 1010 and 1050 Pacific Street were rezoned to R7A. In 2020, there was a rezoning on Grand and Pacific, which rezoned the property adjacent to ours, as well as a small portion of our property to R7A, as well as the 1034 to 1042, which rezoned a portion of Pacific Street on that site to R7A. When we look at the other neighborhood rezonings, next page, please, we can see how our rezoning compares to those rezonings. All of those rezonings created R7A. Every one of them created, they went to an M1-1 district, and they created R7A zoning. Again, 25 of 26 lots. So what's the difference? The basic FAR, height, bulk remains the same. But of all those units that were created and of all the uses at those buildings, MCROWN space was not required on any of those wholly R7A zonings, while a small portion of the 979 Pacific Street rezoning required 25% of ground floor space to be MCROWN. That was in terms of the R7D portion, as that was a split site. So of all the rezonings that were rezoned to R7A, none of those had required MCROWN uses, which is a vital goal of the Community Board here. With regards to family-sized units, all of them allowed studio units. And with regards to any restrictions, none of them were restricted by a restrictive declaration or by a community benefits agreement. What's the difference between those rezonings and our rezonings? Our rezonings provide for no studios, an important goal to an area which seeks larger units for families. Our rezoning, importantly, is going to be restricted by a community benefits agreement, which has already been partially negotiated and would be entered into titles of the property. And I think, most importantly, with regards to the MCROWN space, with regards to other sites, there is no required MCROWN space. Here, we're creating 30,000 square feet. We're partnering with important community partners like Evergreen, who is going to administer our manufacturing space, create good, high-paying jobs for local workers in the area, and really actually create something here which is going to be deeply utilized and beneficial to this local area, in addition to which 10,000 square feet of this would end up being an early childhood community center. Nadine and Bill feel strongly about this. They have backgrounds in education. They are of the area. They're not coming into the area, and it is a goal of theirs to allow for local families and mothers to be able to have their kids housed in this early childhood education center. They're not just creating problems here, they're creating solutions to longstanding problems in the community, which is why I think that you can feel that we are very passionate about this rezoning going forward. And lastly, with regards to the DCP-proposed rezoning and AIMUP, we waited, and we waited patiently to see what was going to be the result of the AIMUP proposal. And so the next slide demonstrates what the comparison is to their buildings and our buildings. And, you know, what is the true comparison? They produce bigger buildings. Their buildings could exist up to a 5.0 FAR. Ours would be a 4.6. They would get more square footage, 168,000 square feet. They would basically have a taller building by three stories, amazingly. Most of the time that we go to community boards and have these discussions, we talk about height as an issue. And right now, again, while it is in flux, the proposed building height of these mixed-use buildings would be 125 feet. And so, you know, it's really, our building would fit, literally fit, within that building that would be created by AIMUP, with the exception being that we would have a greater number of affordable, supportive, affordable units as well as residential units in our building versus the building that would be created under AIMUP. So again, we offer a very strong comparison to those properties, and with the primary difference being that we'll be able to proceed on a shovel-ready site as soon as a rezoning is potentially approved because we're ready to go. The last one, the last page that I will discuss, just has, again, the comparison to AIMUP, creates new affordable housing, check. Creates new neighborhood services, including educational services, check. Creates new public open space. Importantly, a garden to the rear of this property will create available open space, a desired resource both by the community at large as well as the Community Board, check. And expands career pathways and job opportunities through the creation of commercial and manufacturing space, unique to the R7A rezonings here. We are binding this property to provide MCROWN uses. With that, I would pass the microphone to Nick Labares, who can discuss some of the plans and architectural aspects of the design. Nick?
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Thank you all for your time. So what we have here is a site that's over 300 feet long and 110 feet deep. And what this lets us do is mass everything towards the east of the site. You can see on this site plan over here that the maximum height of the building is achieved towards the east end of this site. And to the west, we have an R7A, which is going to probably be masked up very, very low because of the size and shape of that site. So it gives us this opportunity to make the west side of the building lower, which makes for a very nice streetscape. We've put all of the entrances to the community facilities that Rich mentioned on this low side also. And, you know, as Rich said, we are nine floors high. We have about 150 units. We have the 8,500 square feet for the children's, for the educational facility, and we have about 8,500 square feet for commercial. And then we have all of the light manufacturing, which we're also providing. So next slide, please. Next slide. So this is the front elevation of the building, facing Pacific. You can see on the right-hand side over here, you have all of the entrances for all those aforementioned programs, and the main entry for the residential portion is in the center. Next slide, please. This is the cellar floor plan. This has been given over to Evergreen to curate. We have, you know, almost 20,000 square feet, which has good access to the street, which has good access to loading facilities, which are placed on the opposite end of the building from all of the community facility entrances. Next slide, please. This is the ground floor over here. You can see that we have the entry to the MCROWN over here on the far west side, right next to the Early Development Center. You have the residential lobby, and then you have the commercial space over there, which is right next to the loading. Next slide, please. One other thing which is kind of unique about this site is that the extra depth and this length, it gave us the opportunity to do home offices in almost every single unit. So you can see here in the red color, we have sizable home offices, and we think that this is something which is going to be really valued by the community also. Next slide, please. So this just takes you through some typical floor plans as you go up. You can see everything is two-bed, three-bed. You know, there's a few ones, and everything is very, very capacious. And we've worked over the years with this community board, with several stakeholders, and we were very, very careful to take everything to heart that had been communicated. And, you know, I think we all feel very, very strongly that this proposal is as in keeping as anything that we've seen from this area with regard to the MCROWN proposal and the new successor, the AIMUP. So, you know, we're hoping that we can move forward with this because we really think it would be a huge boon to the neighborhood for something like this to happen. Thank you.
With that, we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you so much. Richard, I didn't recognize you. Got a new look today.
Thank you, Chair.
Just going to ask a few questions. Councilmember Hudson had to step out to a press conference that we're having right now, so that's why she couldn't be here. But I'm going to ask some questions. Councilmember Hudson has put in a lot of effort and time in preparing a comprehensive plan for this neighborhood and local community, is very invested in the finalizing this plan. Given how far along this comprehensive planning effort has progressed and that DCP has publicly stated it intends on certifying its proposal for a comprehensive plan by this spring, why are you still trying to get ahead of this community planning effort?
So, as I said before, we have an applicant here who's been around for over four years. And I think that if the applicant was merely concerned with getting a building up and didn't have deeper concerns, I think that we wouldn't even be here anymore. But frankly, given the applicant's longstanding history in the area, which dates back decades, his family has been here for decades, and the fact that there is a lag between when the rezoning will be approved, as we've demonstrated both in Gowanus and other rezonings, and when these units will be produced, I think that they feel that, in fairness, both to themselves as well as to those committee, or really, community members, who don't necessarily have an opportunity to live in the district and don't have an opportunity to necessarily even participate in the process, that's why they are pushing so hard to do this. I don't, to think of it as cutting in line, I think, is the wrong way to categorize an applicant who has really been very patient and has been attentive to what's been sought by the community in terms of the AIMUP plan. And at the end of the day, what would really be the harm here? The AIMUP plan, the importance of having that established was to see what would be allowed and what would be created. And so the building here that would be created is a smaller building, is a building which requires MCROWN uses as desired by the community, and is a building which produces, as far as the margins, more units and affordability than AIMUP. So this is not something where we are putting in a zoning district, which came out of nowhere and makes no sense, as the committee has seen 25 of the surrounding 26 lots are already zoned R7A. This is a vetted, approved zoning district. And so, yes, AIMUP is not finally approved, but we are well within their guidelines. And the difference here is the opportunity to create those units sooner rather than later.
So, Rich, staying that it's not finally approving, you're staying that it's in the guidelines, you know, as anybody, ULEUR applications can change, especially when it gets to the council and we vote on them. Why does the applicant feel like it should be prioritized over the public review of the comprehensive plan if this application could change when it gets to the council?
Yeah, so a good question, but when I look at the envelope and the uses that are required pursuant to AIMUP, I see a building which currently stands at three stories taller than our building, at a building that currently stands at thousands of square feet greater than our building, and one which basically, understandably, given the outlook of city planning, doesn't restrict any uses at the site. I don't see necessarily, even after deliberation, that these buildings in AIMUP will necessarily be reduced by greater than three stories, or, in this case, thousands of square feet. And admittedly, city planning doesn't like to condition uses on buildings. They understand the realities of business and retail and the fact that city planning as a whole doesn't want to limit your uses. The applicant here is voluntarily doing so. So understanding that that's not currently a part of AIMUP, the applicant here is saying, we're going to enter agreements into our property that are going to require these job-generating uses. And not only that, but we've got Evergreen, which is the local industrial advocacy group, to ensure that these uses aren't just good uses but are great uses. So I think that's the reason that despite the fact that, of course, there may be changes to AIMUP, we're still not only well within it, but in some ways exceed the opportunities provided for the site.
I want to go to the building, the new model that Nick pointed out. I'm very interested in the office space that you guys incorporated in each unit. Can you explain to me, did that come from, because Richard stated you guys have been a part of the AIMUP process. So did you hear that from community leaders? Like, where did that thought process come to add the office space into each of these units?
It was more from the shape of the site because we had all this floor area, and we had a deep site. And we saw that we wanted to lower that right-hand part of the site, so then we had some extra floor area. So usually, it's not the most efficient depth, once you get past, like, let's say, 60 feet. So when you add in the home offices, you get to about 70 feet, 70-plus feet. But we saw that we had the floor area, we saw that there was a demand for this within the area, and we just thought it would be good. And then COVID happens, and it just seemed like it was a much more appropriate thing. So, you know, everybody liked it, it stuck, but it was actually coming from the shape of the site.
Does each unit have this?
I think so at this point, yeah. Yep.
And from that space, you couldn't produce another unit, like, another room, maybe?
You can, but you can't really use it for legal light and air because it's, like, stuck back, like, within the thing, within the unit. So you always have a limit with how many bays that you have, you know? So the width of the building dictates how many, like, how many different rooms that you could put in. So we could either prioritize doing some more units and have some more rooms, or we could do the bigger units with that more depth with that home office.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Does any committee members have any questions? Councilmember Bray.
My question, you've sort of already gotten into it. Can you speak to how this plan fits neatly within the comprehensive plan, and also speak to the differences of how it doesn't fall within that plan?
Thank you, Councilmember Bray. So I'm not sure whether or not we can still call up the last comparison slide, which would be prior to the plans and prior to the architectural plans. It would be two plans prior to the architectural calculations sheet. Keep going. You'll see a list that says comparison to DCP proposed rezoning. One more, thank you. So with regards to the building itself, the physical plant of the property, for a building in, in M14R6A, which is arguably the comparable zoning district here, you would have a total FAR of 5.0 with a building of 168,000 square feet as currently composed. Our building, 4.6 FAR with 153,000 square feet. So our building, again, while AMUP has not been finalized, is 15,000 square feet plus or minus less. Of that building, the 5.0 building would have a 3.9 FAR for residential, our building would have a 4.06, extremely similar. With regards to non-residential uses, we would max out our commercial FAR and indeed provide additional square footage in the cellar, so our total square footage in terms of gross square feet is over 30,000 square feet for commercial and job-generating uses. The building height for our proposal, for a mixed-use building, the AMUP proposal would allow for 125 feet, our building would allow for 95 feet, three stories less. Having been involved in five rezonings in this community board since 2019, I can tell you that the three stories of height is meaningful. And so this is more along the lines of what they've previously approved in this district. In addition, again, we talked about city planning and the fact that they don't necessarily want to restrict non-residential uses, we are doing so to create high-quality jobs, job-generating uses for people in the community. And with regards to affordability options, we would actually, actually have expressed a desire to limit our affordability options to one and deep affordability, while currently AMUP would allow for greater than that. Perhaps most importantly, when you look at AMUP and you look at the timeline, and again, we know the demands on city planning are great, given the city of yes proposals and area-wide rezonings like this, but we do know that it has not yet gone into public review in terms of the text of the, of the, of the special district. And so we, we do know that we're years away from that approval process. And so this, this site, once financing would be established, is shovel-ready and could be built within months. So those are the primary differences between us and them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There being no more questions, this panel is now excused.
Thank you.
Counselor, there any members of the public who wish to testify on this panel?
Chair Riley, there are approximately 10 individuals in person who wish to testify, and another four individuals online who also wish to testify. For members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will generally be called in panels of three. If you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called, and prepare to speak when the chair says that you may begin. Please note, also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group, and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council's website. Because we have a mix of in-person and online individuals who would like to testify, we're going to try to do two in-person panels of three people, and then switch it to the online registrants, and then back to the in-person. So for the first group of three individuals who are here in the room, Jose Peñez, please, please excuse me if I am mispronouncing your name, Bishop Robert V. Butler, and Kevin Williams, please step up to the desk.
To the table.
Members, yeah. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant-at-arms has started the clock.
Good morning. My name is Bishop Robert.
One second, Bishop, sorry. Ready, Sergeant? Go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers and committee members. My name is Bishop Robert Butler. I am the pastor of the Glory Tabernacle Church, which is in the 77th precinct, located at 474 Ralph Avenue, within the Crown Heights community. I'm here to support this project, the 962 project, because it is personal for me in two portions. As a former New York Department of Education employee, I think that it is very, very important for us to have early childhood development, early childhood education. The other portion of it that makes it very personal for me is the city is unsecretly in a housing crisis, and I am very familiar with the crisis of housing. Having had a good livelihood, it has been difficult to live in my neighborhood because it has outpriced us. And so I believe that this project would not only give us a great avenue of educating our children at the early stages of their life, but also providing affordable housing for individuals who need it. The community is a great community, and we've seen so many people displaced and so many people moved out of it because they cannot afford it. And this project appears to be a project that helps to solve that problem for now and for years to come. And so I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today and testify concerning this. I am in full support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. Jose?
Si, Jose. Mi nombre es Jose Laiñez. He trabajado en Atlantic Avenue. Entre gran y clase durante los últimos 30 años soy mecánico de automóvil. Solía vivir en la zona, pero ya no puedo permitírmelo. Conozco a Mister Bill, conozco a Nadine, de hace mucho tiempo. Son buenas personas y construirán un buen edificio con apartamentos accesibles para personas trabajadoras, familias trabajadoras, y se necesita en la comunidad porque yo me moví de esa zona por muy cara la renta. Ahora en día, si ellos le dan la oportunidad, yo sé que sí, construirán un buen edificio y posiblemente regresaré a la misma área otra vez.
Thank you, Jose. Just want to stay on the record, we did not have an interpreter here. So we will begin Jose's testimony on the record and be able to translate that. So thank you so much, Jose. Kevin?
Kevin Williams with GZA Geo-Environmental. I'm the environmental consultant that prepared the environmental assessment for this project. And I want to just take a brief opportunity to give a little bit of background context to, to members of the commission relating to, as Councilmember Hudson noted, the displacement of African-American communities and, and those that are socio-economically disadvantaged in this area. One of the things that's very important is the person that prepared the racial equity report to notice, that is indeed true. And the background context of that, though, is even though this area has underwent considerable rezonings along the Atlantic Avenue corridor, you know, some decades back, as well as many of these private rezonings, none of those rezonings had, have been considered in terms of generation of affordable housing. None of the private rezonings along the Pacific or the Grand Corridor were in place at the time that the census took account of this displacement. None of the large-scale R7 zonings along the Atlantic Avenue corridor had MIH, and to my knowledge, none of them took advantage of the inclusionary housing bonus that was created during the time of those rezonings. So what you're seeing is an organic displacement, both through redevelopment that did not include MIH, and as well as a lot of the townhomes that surround this perimeter that converted from multifamily homes back in the 80s and 90s to single-family, higher-income housing. And so it's very, very important to note that you're going to see the infusion of MIH units related to the two rezonings that are, have just recently come out of the ground, as well as this rezoning, that while it may not displace the statistics in terms of percentages of, of people displaced, but it will increase the numerical count of affordable units in the neighborhood, allowing people to remain and not be displaced in the neighborhood. So I wanted to provide that context from the past development in this, in this community district and census tract.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. This panel is excused. Counselor, can you call the next panel?
Yes, Chair, the next panel consists of Bishop Eric Figueroa, Moreo Iberia, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name, and Pastor James Neville.
Do we have a Mario or Marco here? Somebody? Yeah, Marco, sorry, Marco. It's okay, it's ours. First, we'll have Bishop Eric Figueroa.
Good morning, distinguished councilmembers. My name is Bishop Eric Figueroa, and I'm the pastor and founder of the New Life Tabernacle, located in the 77th precinct in the Crown Heights community of Brooklyn. I am here today to enthusiastically support the proposed project at 962 Pacific Street in Crown Heights, which will provide badly-needed affordable housing in a community where too many have been priced out. And that will also feature a new childcare and educational facility in a neighborhood where there are too few options. As someone who has been a pastor for 40 years, I appreciate how this project aligns with the needs of our vibrant community by prioritizing real and permanent affordability with units reserved for families with incomes as low as $50,000 or less, as well as good-paying jobs. Too often, I have seen longtime members of the community forced out because of the rising rents they can no longer afford. They return to the community to attend service, yet they cannot call it their home. This is not something we should find acceptable. Everyone in our congregation should be able to live near where they worship. Meanwhile, vacant lots bursting with potential and possibilities like the one at 962 Pacific have sat follow for too long. Often, this is due to owners, faceless developers, that can simply sit while waiting for perfect conditions or to sell it to the highest bidder. Counsel, I submit to you that this 962 proposal is just what we need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Figueroa. Next, we're going to have Marco.
Buenos días. Yo vivo en Queens en el momento porque yo tuve que migrar de el lugar de la Nai City Two por el costo de la vivienda. Yo conozco a las personas, a Bill y la señora, por mucho tiempo. Sé las personas honestas, amables que son. Por eso les apoyo a que construyan como viviendas accesibles para las personas que tenemos trabajo que no son muy humillados, no son muy bien pagados, y tenemos familias, tenemos hijos que estudian y que se alimentan y que van al médico. Necesitamos viviendas accesibles y yo apoyo la construcción de este tipo de viviendas. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Marcos. And just for the record, I just want to state, members of the public who wish to have an interpreter, you would have to request that three days ahead, and you could do that by emailing SWERTS@council.nyc.gov, or NBNJAMIN@council.nyc.gov, or you can call 212-788-6936. So I just want to state that for the record. Thank you, everyone. Pastor James Neville.
Hey, man, good morning.
Good morning. I also echo, echoing what Bishop has said. As a resident of Crown Heights for over 50 years, I also agree with Councilmember Hudson about the displacement of so many minorities in our community. I'm the pastor of Holy Temple of Prayer, located within the 77th precinct community council in Crown Heights. I'm also the vice chair of the 77th precinct clergy council. I'm here today to support the proposed project at 962 Pacific Street in Crown Heights. As a community resident, I appreciate how this project aligns with the needs of our vibrant community, prioritizing real affordability, building much-needed community space and resources, and creating good-paying jobs. Nadine and Bill here, I had a 1985 Osmobile, who their, their family had owned on Atlantic Avenue, and that Osmobile had over 200,000 miles in. I don't know if you know that 1985 Osmobile? You had one right then. And I used to take it to that Atlantic Avenue shop where their, their parents owned, and I kind of missed it when that, when that shop was no longer there, because that 85 Osmobile with 200,000 miles, I could take it to that Osmobile dealer and get serviced. And so I missed that, that dealership when it closed down, Bill and Nadine. I just want to, the family has been, you know, supportive of our community for decades, and this project represents the voices and values of the neighborhood at a time when additional housing and jobs are desperately needed. We know the process, the immigration, what's going on, at a time when we need this. So as the pastor, one of the clearest needs amongst our faith community is access to affordable housing. Having seen so many individuals and families who have been, you know, displaced, even in my block where I live at, sorry I'm over time, but we, we need this project desperately on 962 Pacific Street. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you so much, Reverend. I had to ask the council where the Osmobile was, I didn't know. So thank you so much. Does any committee members have any questions for this panel?
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor, can you please call the next panel?
Yes, Chair. The next panel, we're going to shift to the online attendees. So I am calling, the next panel will consist of Michelle De Laus, Stephen Fabian, Carmelo Piazza, and Danielle Wong. Starting with Michelle De Laus, could you please turn on your mic to testify?
Michelle, if you could hear me, you could please begin.
Great, thanks so much, Chair and Committee. I appreciate the opportunity to testify. My name is Michelle De Laus, and I'm the executive director of the Fifth Avenue Committee. The Fifth Avenue Committee is a 46-year-old nonprofit comprehensive community development corporation, whose mission is to advance economic, social, and racial justice. I've also been a member of AMUP Steering Committee, the Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan Steering Committee, and I'm here today to testify in support of 962 Pacific Street. And in particular, Fifth Avenue Committee would like to work with Councilmember Hudson and the Osmilers to get to a yes on this project. As Counsel Richard Labelle noted, the Osmilers have offered to do a community benefits agreement to memorialize the commitments that go beyond what is required under mandatory inclusionary housing. They've offered to... They've offered to increase the total number of affordable housing units in a communication to Community Board Eight. They offered to go to thirty-two percent affordable overall, obviously seven percent more than what is required under M I H option one, and also committed to deeper affordability, which I think is particularly important, given the displacement that was, that was mentioned earlier and is very much, has been present for a number of years. So, and I know one of the questions that the Chair asked and was really about, how does this project differ than what is proposed under the Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan? And I'll just say that in particular, that the commitment to go to a higher percent of overall affordability and a deeper affordability is something that could not be achieved if we wait for A M U F. Because any, basically, M I H, any changes to M I H would require citywide text amendment, and obviously, A M U F is not including a citywide text amendment to change the affordability levels. So I'm hoping that the committee will vote in favor and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we'll have Stefan.
Fabian.
Stefan.
Yes, Stefan Fabian.
Stefan Fabian, next. If you can hear me, please unmute.
My name is Stephen Fabian, and I am program manager of real estate and planning for Evergreen Inc., your North Brooklyn Business Exchange. I'm here today to testify in support of the nine sixty-two Pacific Street project, on which Evergreen is part of the team as an advisor. Evergreen is a nonprofit local economic development organization that champions manufacturing, creative production, industrial service businesses in North Brooklyn and beyond. We do this by primarily providing a range of free services, but we also have become a real estate developer for the past sixteen years following the purchase of our first building in two thousand and eight. We have five, and we rent them below market with favorable lease terms. Additionally, we have seen an increase in mixed use developments in our service area. We attribute a lot of this to the twenty-five Kent rezoning, the development of the I B I A. For many of these projects, we simply serve as an advisor during community outreach and support many through testimony. But because these projects that we do are often low in frequency and private developers are often doing them more frequently, we see it as a great opportunity to partner with such projects in a more substantive way. Nine sixty-two Pacific is our second such partnership, following eleven sixty Flushing Project in Bushwick. We believe that developing manufacturing space is worthwhile because it provides a community with high working class, high quality working class jobs with low barriers of entry. Well-paying jobs are a crucial economic development benefit. The Oldsmillers, with their long history in business and in the community, understand this from firsthand experience. Our role in this project has been to draw on our experience to devise on what would make the manufacturing space viable and what kinds of businesses could fit in this particular mixed use context with housing. We expect things like jewelry making, fashion, and home goods to make, make sense. And we will be part of the tenementing process for the manufacturing spaces moves forward. With how this project brings together affordable housing, manufacturing, and community space, we believe that nine sixty-two Pacific can be an innovative model for development that meets an important range of neighborhood needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next, we'll have Carmelo Piazza. Carmelo, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Yes, thank you so much. Good morning, council members. Thank you, everyone, for your service and what you've done for our community. My name is Carmelo Piazza, and I own three early childhood educational facilities, called the Brooklyn Preschool of Science, all of which are in downtown Brooklyn. I was also a teacher for the Department of Ed for almost twenty years at P S two sixty-one, which also happens to be on Pacific Street right off of Smith. I am writing to support the proposed project in Crown Heights. As an educator, I appreciate how this project focuses on the most pressing needs of our vibrant community, prioritizing real affordability, building community spaces and resources, and creating good paying jobs. The commitment to community resources, such as the Early Childhood Education Center, is a thoughtful approach that goes above and beyond the norm for new development, addressing critical needs in our area like accessible childcare. I feel even more true to this because of my school's ideology and how relevant it will be for the children of tomorrow, which is why I feel the need to speak here today. I am excited to be part of such a great vision. As we continue to witness advancements in technology and the increasing digitalization of jobs, introducing a STEM-based program at an early childhood education level is not only timely but also crucial for the future success of our community. In an era where A I is becoming more prevalent, we must equip our younger generation with the skills and knowledge needed to thrive in the evolving landscape. A science-based preschool can lay the foundation for a solid educational journey, fostering a love of learning and exploration from an early age. By integrating STEM concepts into the curriculum, we can prepare our children for the challenges and opportunities to a technologically driven world that is going to be presented to them daily. Moreover, the commitment to community resources, exemplified by establishing an early childhood educational center, demonstrates a thoughtful and progressive approach to development. Providing affordable, accessible childcare is a critical need in this area, and a science-based preschool aligns perfectly with addressing the need while offering unique and enriching educational experiences for our youngest community members. So since taking office, I just want to thank Councilmember Harris as, Hudson, excuse me, as always being, remaining, committed to creating more resources for the community. And I ask that you stand for those of us advocating for more childcare options throughout the community and support the plans for nine sixty-two Pacific Street. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Carmelo. The last panelist is Daniel Wong. Daniel, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
All right, thank you. Good morning. My name is Daniel Wong, a proud resident of ten ten Pacific Street. I also work at the Community Preservation Corporation, otherwise known as C P C. C P C is a nonprofit lender here, founded in New York City in nineteen seventy-four that specializes in sustainable and affordable housing projects. But today, I'm not here in my professional capacity, but as a local citizen deeply invested in the future of our neighborhood. I am here to express my support for this transformative project at nine sixty-two Pacific Street. Living next door to this very empty vacant lot, I envision a development like this, one that not only creates homes but nurtures a vibrant community, prioritizing real affordability, building communal spaces, and creating job opportunities for our local entrepreneurs. Recognizing Nadine and Bill's longstanding commitment to Crown Heights, their involvement in this project is a testament to their understanding and respect for the community needs. Their local approach counters the typical developer-driven projects that often overlook our unique neighborhood dynamics. Addressing the acute affordable housing crisis, this project ensures that the benefits reach the most in need within our community, families. This project, this project's innovative inclusion of light manufacturing space pays tribute to Crown Heights' rich manufacturing history and promises well-paying job growth. The project echoes our community voice, especially in its dedication to early childhood education center. The center is not only a facility, it's a commitment to our children's future, offering accessible and quality childcare care in the community. It stands as a symbol of our neighborhood's dedication to nurturing the next generation of New Yorkers in an affordable and inclusive manner. In closing, the nine sixty-two Pacific Street project stands as a beacon of thoughtful and community-centered development. I believe this development will enrich our Crown Heights neighborhoods in ways that go far beyond the physical structures it will create. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Do any council members have any questions for this panel? If there being no question for this panel, this panel is not excused. Counsel, can you please call up the last panel for nine sixty-two Pacific Street?
Sure, Chair. The next panel will consist of in-person individuals, Leola Holmes, Gregory Smith,
First, we'll have Ms. Leola Holmes.
Good morning. My name is Leola Holmes.
Ms. Holmes, just turn on the microphone for me, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Leola Holmes. I reside at six oh seven Grand Avenue. I served on the seventy-seven precinct council. I was also a participant of Community Board Eight Housing Committee. I've been a resident there for forty-two years. I'm right in the footprint of where they're going to make the housing project over on Pacific Street. It is desperately needed there because most of my neighbors and myself, we have adult children. Our children have children. They have no place to live. They cannot afford the prices of the apartments that have went up in my neighborhood. Directly across the street from me, I have two projects. We couldn't afford it because the bedroom were three thousand dollars for a two-bedroom apartment. Who could afford that making less than fifty thousand dollars a year? This project will do so much for my community right now because it's not isolated in terms of the need of housing. I also was a part of Bill, which was the organization that founded, that actually supported the Atlanta Yard Project. And I supported that project with the hopes that we would have gotten more apartments in which we actually received. So now, this project that's getting ready to happen will actually fit the need of, was desperately needed in my community right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Next, we'll have Gregory Smith.
My name is Gregory Smith. I'm a lifelong resident of Brooklyn, New York. I've lived in several of the communities everywhere, from Bushwick, Brownsville, Bed-Stuy, Crown Heights, Park Slope. I've seen the community change drastically over the years. I remember when it went from Brooklyn Union Gas running things and other projects came up, mass projects that caused rezoning and housing deficits and what have you. And there's a problem in housing, affordable housing, in Brooklyn, New York. I say that, and I say it passionately because I'm a victim of that. I was born and raised in Brooklyn. I'm sixty-seven years old. All but two of my life, years of my life had been in Brooklyn. But however, now I am forced to live in another part of the city. Why? Because as of twenty twenty-one, there was no housing affordable for me. And I'm very passionate about it because I feel like I'm a victim because it has traumatized me. It has led me into undue hardship. It has isolated me from everything that I love. The housing crisis, from my family, my friends, everything that I know and appreciate is in Brooklyn. And because I have to live in the upper part of, of the five boroughs now, far away from my family and friends, I have no support, I have no real support units there. And I feel threatened. I feel lonely. I feel afraid. Even at this point right now, I don't even go to my, my, the place that I'm supposed to live because I'm afraid. And I'm afraid because I don't have the, the unit, the people around me that I need to support me. So I am absolutely in support of this project and any project that's going to bring affordable housing into Brooklyn, that is going to keep families closer together. I appreciate this family because they've been there since I was a little boy. And the continuity that they're bringing in is a wonderful thing. I support it one hundred percent, just like I supported the little cop that used to walk around my school when I was a little boy. So by all means, please, we do support this program, and we hope that it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Williams.
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Williams, and I'm here to support the six, nine sixty-two Pacific Street L L C. I'll have to tell a little story. In the mid-sixties, I came here and, from Alabama, I wanted to start a company. So I was on Pacific Street. I saw this lot there. I rented the lot, and I started working. And as I worked, there was a gentleman that would walk by every day or two, dressed in a real nice steel blue suit, I mean, I'm sorry, gray suit. So one day, he came in, and he said, what are you guys doing? I said, well, I'm opening up a business. He said, okay. He didn't say much. Next two or three days, he come by, and so he saw what we'd been doing, then he began to tell me. He said, well, why don't you buy some of this property? And I did. I bought the property, and I bought it. And finally, I had a nice sized piece of property on the corner. And I had a construction company. I opened it up, and I was able to hire like forty-three guys from the neighborhood, all from the neighborhood, or maybe one or two that wasn't from the neighborhood. So this went on for about thirty-some years. And I said, okay, I'm tired. I want to retire. I retired. And one of the guys on my job, one of the employees, say, can you stay a few years longer? And we got some kids we want to get out of school. I thought about it. What I had in plan could wait. So I said, hey, I said, but where am I gonna go? I sold my property. And one of the guys said, right across the street. I say, okay, we'll see. I want to keep it in the neighborhood anyway. So what I did, I got a deal with Nadine.
Mr. Williams, I love your story, but you're gonna have to wrap it up for us, all right?
Okay, okay. They gave me the property. So I support the nine sixty-two project, and we need new houses, we need affordable houses, and we also need daycare for our kids. So I afforded, I mean, I supported it a hundred percent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Lastly, we're gonna have Charles Booball. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Quite all right. Good morning. My name is Charles Booball. I was born on Atlantic Avenue. I've lived almost my entire life in Brooklyn. I raised my children in Brooklyn. I have a daughter who's an elementary school teacher of the deaf, and a son-in-law who's an ICU nurse. I've coached volunteer swimming in Sunset Park and Bay Ridge for over twenty-five years, and giving back to the community is very important to me. It is self-evident that development of additional housing stock is absolutely necessary. This project is a win-win for all concerned. It includes affordable housing, community resources, and it will create jobs both before, during, and after construction. Bill and Nadine Oldsmiller are committed to doing what's best for the community at a time when there is a critical need at the grassroots level. They are not major developers. They are concerned citizens who are in a position to create a win-win for many constituencies. This project will give housing, it will give jobs, it will give childhood education, and it will give small business development. This project checks all the boxes. Please seize the opportunity and approve it.
Thank you so much. Do any council members have any questions for this panel? There being no questions, thank you so much for your time. Counsel, are there any other members of the public who wants to testify on nine sixty-two Pacific rezoning?
No, not at this time. But if there are public members who have not yet signed up and who would like to testify regarding nine sixty-two Street rezoning proposal remotely, please press the raise hand button down, or if you're in person, please identify yourself to one of the sergeants. Not seeing anyone, Chair, we can proceed with closing this hearing.
There being no other members of the public who wants to testify on L U six, seven, and eight relating to the nine sixty-two Pacific Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. Thank you, Counsel. I will now open the second public hearing on L U's one and two relating to the White Stone Lanes rezoning proposal in Councilmember Ung's district in Flushing, Queens. The proposal is a rezoning from a manufacturing district, M one dash one, to a residential district, R seven A, to develop a residential building with approximately four hundred and fifteen apartments. This rezoning will also involve mapping mandatory inclusionary housing, which will require approximately one hundred and thirteen of the units to be affordable units. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council dot N Y C dot gov slash land use. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to us at land use testimony at council dot N Y C dot gov. I would now like to give Councilmember Ung the floor to give her remarks.
Thank you. First, first I'd like
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Chair Salomon Conrally and the applicant team for presenting today's hearing. This project has evolved during the public review process to address community concerns about density, parking, and traffic patterns. I will say there's been some communication challenges during this process, so I look forward to getting more clarity on what we stand today. I'm committed to bring both new affordable housing and good jobs to my community. And I'm hopeful that we can reach a common understanding of how to best advance these goals. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ung. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
The panel consists of Eric Palatnik.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Eric Palatnik.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answers to all council member questions?
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a sensible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusedtestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Sure. Eric Palatnik, attorney at law, representing Whitestone Lanes. I'm thrilled to be here today. I'd like to thank the council member. She came into a process of rezoning that we started six years ago. And she came in, I think she was admitted into office a year or so ago, a year and a half. Unfortunately, that process of changing council people midway through a rezoning process caused the miscommunication that the council member is speaking to. We've been working for the past six years on what I think is a model rezoning application. You are presented today with a rezoning application that is unanimously supported by every single body that has come before, especially the Community Board, Community Planning Board 7. Now, Community Planning Board 7 in Whitestone, in the Flushing area, is a very vocal community board. And they're very concerned about things such as parking. They're ultra-concerned about the Linden Place Extension, which is an off, an exit ramp of the Whitestone Expressway that leads to the Whitestone Bridge that causes traffic delays, going back to what I still call Shea Stadium. They redesigned that Linden Place Extension eight years ago. It was built five years ago. It was done with their input and the former councilperson's input. Whitestone Lanes, which is owned by Marco Macaluso, who's right here today, a resident of Queens his entire life, and from Whitestone, who built this business from the ground up with his family, starting in 1965 when they first built it, when Ferryland was across the street and there's an entertainment mecca over there. Well, Marco tried to develop the property and work through the rezoning with the community, acknowledging the intensity of the traffic concern over there. And one of the main concerns of all community board members throughout this entire process has been the elimination and the prevention of any commercial space in this building. They refused to act on it. They refused to support it. They would not have given it any consent or support at all if it had what they considered to be a traffic generating component to it. We hired expert after expert. We did different analyses, and they were right. What's going up across the street, if you can go to the next slide, please. Get to one that's an aerial picture, please. I think it's a couple in. You can go a couple more if you can. There you go. That's perfect. So that's Whitestone Lanes. It's surrounded by a shopping center, retail, local retail, it's own manufacturing. And we are here today to ask you for a rezoning from the manufacturing to an R7A. The manufacturing district that's across the street, extends across the street as well, is home to two, two distribution facilities. They're moneymakers. The New York Times site is across the street, well-known. Wildflower is building a four-story distribution facility. The Toys R Us toy store that sits on the side of Ferryland across the street is turning into a distribution facility. The distribution facilities want to be here. So what we've asked you to do is rezone the property to a residential development. If it were to be approved, it would stand nine stories and 95 feet tall. If you can go to the next slide, please. Go one more slide, please. So the zoning district would turn to an R7A, and if you can go to the next slide, please. And the R7A district would bring with it an as-of-right development that would include 415 apartments and 113 permanently affordable units with zero commercial space in the building and zero community facility space. So the community board, though, in the five years that we've been working there, weren't just concerned about traffic and eliminating the commercial. They were also concerned about the traffic patterns. If you can go to the next slide, please. Next slide, please. And they were also concerned about an open plaza that we're required to provide by a part, by requirement of city planning. The area is underserved with respect to public parks. It has very little open space. So as a requirement of the environmental assessment statement, we're required to provide open space. But we didn't just provide open space. We provided a Manhattan-quality style plaza, the likes of which have never been seen in this part of Queens. We worked very closely with the community board, who at first had concerns over it. And we worked very closely with city planning. That plaza has turned into a very expensive undertaking to keep it and build it at the style that we've designed it, which is equivalent to a pop standard. And you can see the plaza on the right-hand side there, on the top slide. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. You can go to the next one. You can go to the next one. And one more. Hopefully, we get to the traffic. Next one. Keep going if you can, please. Okay. So here, you can see the traffic patterns on the streets around it. You can see the cars backed up. You can go to the next slide. It shows you an elevation of the building. Just keep going if you can. I'm gonna get to another slide. There you go. That's where I'm trying to go. All right? If you can go to the next slide, one more forward, maybe. And one more. Here you go. This gives you an overview of the property right now. The way the property is, this shows you the arrows coming in and out. It's meant to show you egress. Those traffic entrances that you see with the red arrows are going to be mimicked in the new development. If you can go to the next slide, please. And you can see one more slide forward, please. Okay. So what we're showing you here, if you look at the slide at the top, is showing you cars are coming in on one side of the property, and they're exiting on the other side. The idea of it coming in from the Linden side only and no exits on the Linden side, which is the top, again, is to protect the traffic pattern. If you can go to the next slide, please. This shows you how much time and effort has been put into it. And again, this is all explaining to you why the building has no commercial use. We gave up perhaps one of the most profitable components of the building with our work with the community board in order to develop a building that would reduce traffic. As you could see here, the proposal is shown on the left. The as-of-right that could be built there, such as the distribution facility or community facility, is on the right. The elimination of an incredibly, incredibly supportive income-generating component, such as the proposed commercial use that was in the application originally, and the removal of it during negotiations and discussions with the community, is perhaps one of the most expensive community benefits I've ever put into a project before. We gave up a lot to do that, and we did it to earn the support of the community. If you can go to the next slide, please. Next slide, please. We were asked by the community to do a lot of work on the school seats, and if there was enough school seats in the community for us to accommodate all of the future students. And this slide shows you that we've done all of that. Next slide, please. And the as-of-right alternatives. What we're trying to show you here is, next slide, is that this is what can be built on the property. If this project does not go forward, these are the as-of-right alternatives. You could build a hospital. You could build a distribution facility. Or you could build a mix of the two and some kind of community facility. We're not here to do that today. We would like to build residential. We worked very hard to secure nearly unanimous support of Community Planning Board 7, the support of Donovan Richards, the borough president, and the support of city planning. And we would hope that everybody likes the project that we've set forth today. You can go to the next slide, please. One more slide. This goes to what I was saying a moment ago. There is no proposed commercial use within the building. If you saw the location of the building now on the Whitestone Expressway next to commercial, it's actually called Whitestone Lanes. It has commercial use in it. We've eliminated that commercial use. And the reason we've done that again, so I can be abundantly clear, was after years of discussion with this community. This is a model of a rezoning. This is a good example of a rezoning that we worked with the incoming council member. We're working with the current council member. And we've worked with every single stakeholder in the community to secure everybody's sign-on, every single person's sign-on. The only thing we haven't done yet, unfortunately, is worked out a deal with some third parties who would like to be involved in the construction of the building. That we haven't done. But other than assigning contractual obligations to third parties to build this building, I am presenting to the City of New York, to solve its housing crisis, a shovel-ready development with a local developer who's sitting in your room, who's been invested in your neighborhood for 50 years, that's ready to go. He's ready to build tomorrow. If we'll make a deal, which we're trying to with the third parties, we will make that deal. And I'm hoping we can. We're going, we've been sitting with them, and we're gonna try and sit again. But as far as the land use component of this application goes, never in my career have I presented an application that has been so well-supported. And I'd be doubtful if I'll come back to you again with another application in my career that's been so well-supported. I thank you very much for your time today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I have a few questions. I'm gonna see if Councilmember Ung has some questions.
Sure.
How have you responded to some of the borough president's recommendations, such as those around affordability levels, job opportunities, or enhancements around open space and recreational use?
Yes. We've spoken with the borough president at length. Some of the discussions I just mentioned a moment ago are impacting, some of the, are substantially impacting the economics, which directly relates to the affordability. You have the opportunity to bring into this project 113 option Level 1 units, which is twice as much as come into Flushing in the past few years. You're creating a great opportunity to do so. The borough president would like to talk about the MIH levels. The MIH levels relate directly to the ability of the developer to afford to be able to provide that because there is no tax subsidy in there right now. And as I mentioned ago, there's a third party involved that's also asking for the developer's funding. So the developer only has so much money in his pocket. His name is Marco Macaluso. He's a local guy. He's not, he's not a big shot out there. And there's only so much that can come out of a pocket. We would love to give much deeper affordability. There are other people that are also asking for money to come out of the project. And we must make our deal with them as well. So we'd like to try to increase the number of MIH units greatly, tremendously, I mean. We'd like to make that effort. But right now, we are put under some other financial pressures that are causing a little bit of difficulty with us achieving the goal that we all share, which is to provide more affordable housing to the city. I'll mention this, too. We're on the cusp of signing an arrangement with 32BJ that we've been working on for the past two years that we feel would be the provision to the borough president's position, very good jobs. Their rates are incredibly competitive. They, in the marketplace, they're very similar to other people. And they do a great job. And we just spoke with them yesterday. I don't recall what some of his other questions were. I think I addressed some labor. I addressed--
Open space, recreational use.
The open space and the recreational use. Oh, the plaza. The plaza was the biggest discussion at the community board. The area is substantially underserved, as I mentioned ago, by open space. There is a lack of open space. So the dogleg of the property, we're providing a beautiful plaza. I don't know if the borough president had concerns about it.
Given that this is a straight rezoning, how will you be sure that the plaza will be built?
The plaza is being put, is a restrictive declaration that's being attached to the property that's going to govern the entire ground floor layout. This was worked out in combination with Department of City Planning, their city environmental quality review. It's a restrictive deck that's tied into the secret. I can see your legal counsel's nodding his head. That restrictive deck was created at the request of both city planning and the community board. The purpose of it was to lock in the ground floor layout, exactly as you just suggested, so that the community board could be assured that the Linden Place Extension was this project they worked on for 10 years, a decade to achieve, and they're quite proud of. They wanted the ground floor layout to be in and out the way we were proposing, the way they required it. And they wanted that to be memorialized. So we put that into the restrictive declaration. And also in the restrictive declaration is the plaza area.
So my last question is, you mentioned shovel-ready.
Yes.
So you guys are willing and able to build this without a tax abatement, like 421A?
The project can be built without a 421A. The margins are close, but the project can be built. Not just that, there's been a substantial amount of developers that the owner started to talk to that have expressed an interest in building in the current climate if the price is right. And the owner has, understands where he's at right now with that. I will say that that's barely tenable. And I think you know that, obviously. There's been very, I think Concord, New Hampshire, pulled more building permits last year than New York, New York City did. So we know we're in a slump. He couldn't be more anxious to go. The bowling alley, by the way, just so you know, if you've been following the daily news stories, the bowling alley is done. He'll tell you, they don't have much business. COVID put whatever nail in the coffin that could be put in. It's an iconic place. So he doesn't have any way to make a living right now. So this project, moving forward in one way, shape, or form, whether it's financially tenable as a residential rezoning, which would help solve the city's housing crisis, or whether he sells it to Wildflower across the street to build another distribution facility, he doesn't have, this man is in a fix. He has to do something because nobody goes bowling anymore. So if you want to go bowling, he'll keep the bowling alley. But nobody, nobody really goes anymore. It's a shame. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Councilmember Ung, you have any questions?
No.
No? Okay. Councilmember Scholman?
Hi, how are you?
Hello. Good morning. Good afternoon.
Good morning. Oh, good afternoon, sorry. So, yeah, I have a que, so I see that we have labor here this, to this afternoon. And I appreciate what you said about 32BJ. My understanding is there, they've raised concerns about an agreement actually being signed. So I wanted to ask about that with you.
With which, with 32BJ?
Mm-hmm.
I spoke to, I think it was Sarah, yes, to Ms. Peterberg. I'm just, not recalling her name, but we spoke yesterday. Yes, I actually reached out to them a year ago to initiate a conversation with them when I had heard that there was a strong desire to have union labor, permanent union labor jobs on this site. They've proven to be a very trusted and reliable and excellent service through the last decade that I've worked with them. And we have fashioned and penned an agreement that is about to be signed. At about the time we were about to sign that, as I mentioned in the MIH discussion, another third party came into the mix and would like to have a piece of the job as well. We're working and sitting with them. That piece seems as if it might be a little overpowering, but we're trying our hardest to try and achieve it.
Okay. I'd like to, because I, I know 32BJ is important as our, just organized labor in general. So like to see those agreements signed as we move forward. And I appreciate you working with them. Thank you.
We'd like to work with everybody that could be reasonable with us on their fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? There being no members that have any questions for this panel, this panel is now excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who wants to testify on this project?
Yes, Chair. We have four members who signed up online to testify and one person who is here in the room. So we will start with a person who is here in the room, and that is Sarah Penenberg.
Yes, Sarah. That's who I spoke to yesterday.
Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant-at-arms has started the clock.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Riley, and members of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchising. My name is Sarah Penenberg, and I'm the political coordinator at SEIU 32BJ. 32BJ is dedicated to represent 175,000 members in 11 states, Washington DC, and in Washington DC, and in New York. Our union members are the pillar to the property service sector here in New York, performing crucial jobs in the property service sector. As mentioned just prior to this, 32BJ has been in talks with Marmar Realty on Whitestone Lane rezoning. But to date, we have not been able to have a credible commitment on this project to create the family-sustaining and middle-class jobs that maintain prevailing wage standards for building service workers in the city. These are jobs that build up our community and that create a robust middle class. A project like Whitestone Lane would result in about five to six full-time property service jobs. And gaining a credible commitment here for this project, in addition to creating prevailing wage standards, would also make there be labor peace agreement in securing a union representation if employees choose so. Labor is an important part of the foundation of New York City. A project like Whitestone Lane would benefit the community on multitude of different fronts, one of them being a path to the middle class prevailing wage. So I hope that we can come to an agreement on this project. It is true that we had some discussions, but we are still pending that agreement. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, I don't know if anyone has any questions for you. Any members have any questions for Sarah? Oh, they don't. All right. All right, thank you, Sarah. Counsel, can you please call the next panel for this item?
We will now switch to the online individuals who have signed up to testify. That consists of Arlene Fleishman, Eugene Kelty, Charles Apelian, and Marilyn Bitterman. Please note, once you have testified remotely, you will be exited from the online chatroom, and you can view the live stream broadcast of a remainder of a hearing on the council's website. We will now start with Arlene Fleishman. Please turn on your microphone.
Arlene, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin. Arlene, are you there? Okay, we'll come back to Arlene. Next, we'll move to Marilyn--
Bitterman.
Bitterman. Marilyn, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
I'm unmuted. Thank you. I'm a member of the Mitchell Linden Civic Association and a resident of the Mitchell Linden community for over 50 years. This project was very different when it was initially presented to the community. We were against it. However, working with the community board, membership, the land use committee, the developer, and Eric Palatnik, we finally agreed to the project as presented. Only housing with no retail or commercial uses. As an elected body, it is the council's responsibility to honor what the community needs and agreed upon. We worked diligently on this project, which resulted in addressing the needs of our community. I am imploring the council to listen and agree with us. I'd like to thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to call Arlene Fisherman again. Arlene, if you can hear me, please--
Yes, I hear you.
Go ahead, Arlene.
Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, I should say afternoon. I appreciate this opportunity to address you regarding the White Stone Lanes rezoning. I am Arlene Fleishman. I serve as president of the Mitchell Linden Civic Association, representing over 5,000 families residing in 28 cooperative buildings. We have, since the 1950s, spoken with one voice. Maintaining the integrity and quality of life for all has and still is the goal of our organization. When first approached about the rezoning of the White Stone Lanes, I was dead-set against the development of a nine-story apartment complex at this location and remained so until many committee meetings were held, issues of this concern discussed, compromises made, and negotiations concluded. I come to you today with the support of the entire Mitchell Linden community to ask for your support to honor the request for the zoning change for the White Stone Lanes, permitting the development for residential housing void of any commercial entities. We look forward to welcoming our new neighbors while maintaining the safety and security of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. Next, we'll have Eugene Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's Kelty, K-E-L-T-Y. I'm the chair, community board seven, for over 26 years. I've been on the board for almost 40 years. So thank you for letting me testify before the council. It's, it's nice, and I appreciate the Zoom. It's much easier than trying to get downtown. So I appreciate the council's working with the community on this. In a fast nutshell, because you don't need to hear repeated information, this project has been sitting, I thought it was at least eight years, not six, like Eric talked about, but as you said, we were working it in the past for over 10 years. We pushed very hard to get the residential component, to pull the commercial component out of it. Anybody that knows the area knows that it's gridlocked over there. For anybody in DOT understands that intersection used to be what they call Level F, and you can't improve a Level F. And over the course of the years, during my, you'll hear him testify in a second, Chuck Apelian, we've worked with a lot of the engineers in the area and the Borough President's previous engineers to get them to put causeways in over there to help improve the district. So right now, we got one of the sites that's coming up and could impact us if we go back to a commercial component, and that's why we, we pushed specifically for a residential component, and we put the restricted declarations on it, and we hope that that would make it very well, and it seems the civic groups are going with it. We agree with it. As I said, there's plenty of development around it. You're going to hear it that there's a site nexus, which is the Stop &amp; Shop, and across the roadway is the Toys R Us. So I, I don't need any more commercial on there. I need residential, and we need it so it doesn't impact the area. And, you know, I know it's kind of tough for Councilwoman Ung. She's relatively new, but she's not new to the area. She's worked in the elected officials area, so she knows the area very well, and we're very pleased to work with her, but she, her office has been involved with this. I'd like to say the Borough President's office was involved in this, but as you see, there's a little gatch where he believes that it was needed to be commercial when, in fact, we had to bring to his attention, there's a lot of commercial already there. So, you know, we're looking forward to this thing to move, looking forward to move very quickly, because it seems like it's being stonewalled a little with a lot of stuff, so we're hoping that it can move through the council very quickly to, to get what we need to help the community and to help the developer. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Eugene. The last person on this panel is Charles Apelian.
Hi there.
You may be, Charles.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you, Chair. My name is Chuck Apelian. I'm the vice chair and land use chair, community board seven here. As you heard, it's been a number of years we've worked on this, and, and the big turning factor was the support of the Mitchell Linden Co-op, representing 5,000 families. Our entire goal for White Stone Lane was simple. Replace the manufacturing, commercial, retail, and community facility use, I'll get to that in a second, solely with housing. Why in one word, as you heard, traffic. And there are also huge amounts of commercial, retail, and community facility nearby, hundreds of thousands, and literally the potential for millions of square feet on the other side of the highway. Everybody felt our 7A was a good solution, and it would allow greater bulk than current, but only with the strict condition that it become a residential development only and without the choice and chance for community facility. And I'll explain as I keep going forward. Therefore, the developer agreed to the following restrictive declaration, which was the only reason we got overwhelming support by both the Co-op, community, and our community board. A, eliminate community facility use. B, maximize the dwelling units to be 350, minimal parking spaces to be 300. You heard about the access and restrictions on Linden Place and onsite parking for delivery vehicles. The restrictive declaration guarantees a unit count. Why? Well, please remember, the plan being presented is illustrative, and our 7A zoning is approved without the restrictive deck, and community facility use is still allowed in the underlying zoning. A high-traffic-generating med center or school could be built after the rezoning, and guess what? No housing would be built, even though this plan shows that it is. We only want housing. Your committee is learning, so you will understand that the restrictive deck to eliminate community facility ensures that only a residential building can be built, and ensures that the 350 unit count in the restrictive deck and the number of Mih houses are permanent. We came up with 350 units to provide decent-sized units for families to flourish in our community, rather than small student-ops and transit-one bedrooms, and we came up with 300 parking spaces to meet our board's requirement for 100% parking, so--
Thank you, Charles.
That's two sentences.
Go ahead.
Residents won't need to search on-street parking, which would increase the traffic in the area, again, reducing traffic. I appreciate the time. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you, Charles. Are there any questions for this panel? There being no questions, this panel is excused. Counsel, can you please call up the last panel for this item?
Yes, the last panel consists of Christian Barthes, who is online.
Christian, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Yes, I can hear you. Good afternoon. My name is Christian Barthes, and I'm a proud 20-year member of Local 157, area standard representative for the New York City District Council Carpenters, and also I'm a Queens resident. It is my privilege to speak on behalf of our 600 members residing in the immediate area of this project, and a thousand more who call Queens home, who could not be here to do their work commitments. This is personal to me. I grew up bowling at White Stone Lanes, and I live just five minutes away from this development. Every morning, I pass by the site when I take, you know, White Stone Expressway on my way to work and five of my members. This is my community, and I care about its future, future. This is which why I must voice my opposition to the development. Make no mistakes, creating more housing is critical, but if the very people building affordable housing cannot even afford to live in it, then we are making this crisis worse, not solving it. That's why it brings me no joy to report that while we have, have some discussions with the developer, we don't have any agreement at this time. We transparently provide them our rates and offer to work with them to make sure this project is profitable for them and actually buildable for, from a financing perspective. After all, if a project cannot be built, what is good for it for my members? Councilmembers, you know us, union carpenters, we're always too willing, we are always too willing to compromise, and we have done so in the past. But we cannot, and we will not settle for scraps, and at this point, we don't even have scraps to consider. We cannot work towards a deal if one of the side is unwilling to provide any, any data to offer to back up to their claims. Despite months of outreach from our union, there is no offer in hand from the developers. Since an initial discussion on December 7th, there have been multiple meetings canceled at the last minute, all by the developer. We have repeatedly asked to them to provide any information to us so we can work with them. Nothing has been provided. We hope this is not indicative of how they will act towards their community if our rezoning is granted, but actions that tell better story than words. That is part of the reason why we are, we urge you to oppose--
Thank you, Christian. Thank you, Christian.
Um, just let me finish, please. In our contract agreement--
If you could just wrap it up, Christian, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and solidarity, you know, from the union, union carpenters. You know, we just want to get, you know, you know, an agreement approved, and, you know, for this rezoning to be approved. You know, we provide the, this developer to call this, you know, things, that's all we're looking to get over here.
Thank you so much for testifying, Christian. Are there any members of the public who is, um, excuse me, are there any members of the committee who have questions for this panel? Are there being no questions, this panel is excused. Counsel, are there any other members of the public who is to testify on LUs 1 and 2?
At this time, there doesn't appear to be anybody in the room else wishing to testify on One Stone Lanes, but if you do wish to testify, please approach one of the sergeant-at-homes. If you have signed up online and you wish to testify, please raise your hand now. Okay, not seeing anybody online or in person. You may proceed with closing this hearing.
There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LUs 1 and 2 relating to the White Stone Lanes rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the item is laid over. I will now open the third public hearing on LUs 3, 4, and 5 relating to the 2226 Third Avenue rezoning proposal. This proposal seeks to develop a 10-story life science building in Manhattan in Deputy Speaker Ayala's district. This application consists of a rezoning on the part, on part, the development site that is currently zoned for residential use only. The rezoning would be from an R7B to an C4-6, which is the zoning district for the rest of the site. The application also seeks a text amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing and extend the East Harlem Corridor Special District to include the proposed development site. Lastly, the application seeks a special permit to reduce the number of requiring loading berths. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants prepare this, to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would like to prepare and submit a written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusettestimony@council.nyc.gov. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
Chair, the first panel consists of Richard Bass.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Sorry. Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Richard Bass.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for, in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in answers to council member questions?
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusettestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Please just reinstate your name and organization for the record before--
I'm Richard Bass. I'm with the law firm of Ackerman LLP. Thank you for this opportunity to present to the committee. This application is a little different. As you can see from the, the slides, the image on the left is the actual building. We've constructed the building pursuant to the existing zoning. The changes to the zoning resolution that we're seeking is to permit life science use in the entirety of the building. Can we go to the next slide? This is a, in, hard to see summary of, of the proposal, but let me just verbally summarize it. To facilitate a life science use at this site, we have to make certain amendments to the special district regulations. The first one is to allow 7.2 FAR as a right for commercial use. That would include Use Group 9 life science use. Also, to do life science use that has a higher number of required loading berths, so we have to then create a mechanism to get relief from the loading berth requirement. And then we are seeking relief from the loading berth requirement. And the last change is to, since this lot is split between R7B and the C46, we need to amend the zoning map and the special district map to incorporate the la, the western 25 feet. So as you can see from the middle slide, that little bump out in the middle is our extension, and because we're, as a right, you could do residential, we also have to amend the Mih exhibit, Appendix F. Even though we're not doing affordable housing, we still have to amend it. So the, the changes are permitting greater commercial use, creating a relief mechanism from the loading berth, seeking that relief, and expanding the district by 25 feet to the west. In discussions with the community board, first of all, we've had long discussions with the community board from the onset of this project, as well as with the council member. We made a commitment to the community board that we would use 32BJ as our union workers. The community board raised concerns that we included three tax lots that we don't control. They would seek the council to reduce the, the action, to only include our site. We're agnostic on that request. The same thing, there was a, to allow greater height and greater density. We don't need either of those two things. We agree with the community board. Again, we defer to the council if you would like to restrict the amendment to only our site and to the existing zoning. That's it.
Oh.
Short and sweet.
Oh, thank you.
It's easy when you built the building.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So just have a few questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate on the need for this rezoning, given that the uses being proposed could be developed as a right under the current zoning?
Well, that's a really good question. In our discussions with life science users, they prefer the certainty of Use Group 9 as-- as a permitted use. That's not there today. We could be cute and say, "Life science use is Use Group 4 or Use Group 6." If you look at other life science projects around the city, there's a variety of use groups that cover life science use. In our discussions with users, they wanted that certainty, and that's why we went through this rezoning process. Because honestly, with my applicant, my client, spend two-plus years going through this very expensive process if they didn't think Use Group 9 was a required, was a requirement.
Do you have a current tenant for the life science building proposed? If not, are you committed to this, or would you also consider alternative as a right use that a tenant may propose?
We're in discussions with other life science users. We did have a user, but because the process took so long, they moved on. So currently, we don't have a user. This, my client is committed to life science use at this site and at other sites throughout the city, has made a commitment to the council member. We've reached out to Hope Communities, we will reach out to the Math and Science High School on 116th and Pleasant. We believe there is still a need for life science use in the city. It's a public policy of the city to have additional life science users. We think this is an ideal location.
Thank you. Do any other members have any questions for this panel? Councilmember McCar.
Just wanted to ask, what's the state of your conversations with Deputy Speaker Ayala, who represents this area?
We, to paraphrase her, she's, you know, she said, "You had me at life science." We had a very, you know, good discussion. I've worked well with her in her office on other projects. I've worked in East Harlem since '79. She supports the project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCar. There being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Are there any members of the public remotely or in person who wish to testify on 2226 Third Avenue rezoning?
Chair, there is nobody signed up in person or online to testify.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on LU's 3, 4, and 5 relating to the 2226 Third Avenue rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open the fourth public hearing on LU's 9 and 10 relating to the 166-11 91st Street Avenue Special Permit Proposal in Councilmember Williams District in Jamaica, Queens. The special permit requested will waive the heights requirement that applies to narrow lots in the special downtown Jamaica district. The special permit will allow applicants to develop a mixed-use building with 28 apartments on this narrow lot. The proposal includes mapping mandatory inclusionary housing over the development site, which will require applicants to include affordable housing in the proposed development. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
The panel for this item consists of Richard Lobel.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Richard Lobel.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in response to questions by council members?
I do.
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, please reinstate your name and organization for the record.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Councilmembers, once again, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant, 16611 91st Avenue LLC. We are here today for the special permit, as you see before you on the screen. Next slide. Unlike rezoning applications, which we've previously brought before the council, as well as earlier today, this is for a special permit. So the downtown Jamaica district regulations provide for certain height limitations for properties on narrow streets. This is a provision, Section 11560, which would allow the granting of a special permit in order to waive those height restrictions. By way of background, this is, as far as our office was able to discern, the only property that is affected by this condition is clearly an unintended consequence of the special district regulations that resulted in a height cap on this otherwise buildable site, and so city planning has been supportive of this application, as is evidenced by their approval. And we also have the approval of the community board and of the Queensborough President's Office. The modification here would allow, at the development site, the provision of a building with roughly 13 stories, as will be described later. And importantly, and pursuant to the special permit, the modification is necessary to provide, one, density and scale as contemplated in the special downtown Jamaica district, and two, provide much-needed housing in the Jamaica neighborhood of Queens District 12. Importantly, in addition to the special permit that's sought, as we approached city planning with this application, they found there to be a true opportunity here, which was to map the site with mandatory inclusionary housing, which would provide for mandatory inclusionary on a site which otherwise would not require that. So despite the fact that this is not a rezoning action, with the special permit itself, with the mapping of MIH, you get the additional benefit of allowing affordable units where none would have been required had they built as a right. So we really have what is seen as a win-win in this application. The next slide provides the statistics behind the development. Again, this would be a building with 13 stories plus cellar. The underlying zoning is C45X, as will be demonstrated on the area map. This is pervasive in the area. And the building here, 19,000 square feet, plus or minus residential, with 1,500 square feet of community facility. Height at 139 feet. There would be no parking, as it would be waived. The units would be 28 units, of which eight would be affordable, when prior to this time, none would be required to be affordable. The next slide is the zoning map. I think this really well demonstrates the nature of the area. Again, they shaded in gray the downtown Jamaica special district, and the C45X, which extends here for quite a number of blocks, and is also on the site. The C45X allows for the underlying square footage at a 6 and a height at 13 stories, as would be permitted in this district, absent this narrow lot condition. So the special permit really allows for just merely the reinstatement of the height and bulk as would be permitted otherwise. The next slide is a tax map, which highlights in red the proposed development site, as well as the area of the proposed MIH text amendment, roughly 3,600 square feet, of which the applicant's site is 3,400 square feet. The next slide is the area map, which really demonstrates why the special permit is appropriate here. Again, density in the area reflects the C45X. In fact, the building immediately to the right, the large pink rectangle in the C45X, is producing a site with roughly 12 stories at 124 feet and 462,000 square feet of floor area. This will be a massive site, but interestingly, because our site is now being mapped with an MIH district, we will benefit from MIH on this site, whereas other sites in the area do not necessarily benefit. In addition, of those property, of those, of the parcel, of the units created in that parcel, 614 dwelling units would be created with 284 parking spaces, clearly sufficient parking for the area. The next several slides demonstrate photographs, which primarily show the hulking, large building to the east of us, as has been discussed. And the slides after that demonstrate the site itself. Again, contextual building of 13 stories with a greater-than-required rear yard of 25 feet, and a mix of studios, ones and twos, throughout the property, inclusive of community facility on the ground floor. Feel free to page through those plans and materials. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions, as is the applicant team.
Thank you, Richard. Could you describe how the proposed development will include environmental sustainability features as part of its design?
Sure. I'm gonna just nod at the development team, and would you like to discuss? I wouldn't mind, Nick, would you mind discussing environmental sustainability? The, okay, oh, so I'll just continue. So as was requested by the Borough President's Office, there was a request that we look at sustainability measures. Obviously, the site here being 3,400 square feet is somewhat limited in terms of being able to provide meaningful sustainability, but the one concern, as was expressed and as the applicant is happy to abide with, is a green roof. The Borough President specifically requested that the site and the roof be painted white, and we're happy to do so. In addition to which, the building is intended to be electrified, as per current DOV regulations. So, in short, we're trying to do what we can to provide a sustainable building.
For the community facility space, could you please further describe what type of outreach you have done to fill the space?
Yeah, I mean, understandably, given the fact that this is a small site, there's only going to be about 1,500 square feet of community facility space produced, and so the council member has expressed a preference for a local community facility in the form of, for example, medical offices, some service that would be able to be utilized by the surrounding residential community, particularly in light of the large number of units coming online to the east. So, we've just, just being, the applicant being from the area, has basically just been seeking guidance in terms of the likelihood of what community facility could locate there, and we do have some information back that medical office may be appropriate.
Thank you. Do any members of the committee have any questions? There being no questions, this applicant panel may be excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on 166-11 91st Street Avenue Special Permit, remotely or in person?
No, Chair, no one has signed up to testify in, online or in person. Just double-checking now, and if anybody in the room would like to testify, please go see the sergeant at arms, and if you're online and you have signed up, please raise your hand at this time.
There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LU's 9 and 10 relating to the 166-11 91st Street Avenue Special Permit Proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open the fifth public hearing on LU's 11 and 12 relating to the 230 Kent Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Wrestler's district, and we're joined here by Councilmember Wrestler, District in Williamsburg, Brooklyn. This is a proposal to develop a mixed-use residential building with approximately 40 apartments. The proposal involves rezoning a pearly manufacturing district, M1-4, to a mixed-use district, The proposal includes mapping the mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoning area, which will require applicants to include affordable housing in the proposed development. Because this would be a new mixed-use district in this area, the application would also involve adding the proposed mixed-use district to the regulations in the zoning resolution that governs these districts. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to us at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to give the floor to Councilmember Wrestler to give any remarks.
Chair Riley, can I ask a question? Am I permitted to ask two questions prior to their presentation?
Uh, that's new, but sure, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Chair, for the opportunity today, and I just want to, I had two questions for the applicant. One, how much money was spent to remediate this site to make it feasible for development to go forward?
The applicant's, Judy Gallant, Brian Caveley.
Oh, so, hold up, hold up, before we do that, before we do that, one second. So, Counsel, please call the first panel for this item. Let me just swear them in real quick.
Sorry, sorry.
Yes, the first panel consists of Judy Gallant.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Judith Gallant.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in response to questions by council members and to the subcommittee?
I do.
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to kick it back over to Councilmember Wrestler for his opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair Riley. How much money was spent to remediate the site?
The applicant spent between $7 and $8 million remediating the VOCs that were disposed of on the site by the prior owner, which was a paint manufacturing establishment.
And what sustainability, kind of green upgrades, have you all incorporated into the design plan?
The building would contain a variety of green or sustainable measures. First, although the development site is not currently in the floodplain, it is projected that the floodplain could reach the development site by 2080. That's a worst-case scenario. And rather than waiting for a retrofit of the building to meet that challenge, the building would be built to resist hydrostatic pressures, and the foundation would be dry-floodproof, which in essence means watertight. That's in anticipation of what's happening. In addition, there would be no dwelling units located on the ground floor, and below-grade mechanical equipment would be limited to the minimum necessary to service utility points of entry with the remainder on the roof and the mechanical bulkhead. In addition, there would be either a green roof or solar panels. The decision as to which would come later, as the mechanical equipment for the building is designed, and shadow studies are done to assure maximum viability of solar panels, if that is selected. The building would also be 100% electric, even though that would not be required if plans were filed prior to July 1st of 2027. The building would contain no vehicle parking at all, and would contain 20 bicycle parking spaces. And in addition to the six new street trees that would be provided around the site, the applicant is committed to working with DEP and DOT, if necessary, to establish the viability of rain gardens on the streets surrounding the site.
That all sounds very good. This applicant took some risk in putting really a small fortune out to remediate a toxic site in our community and to allow it to move forward for development, and that's a good thing for our community, and I am appreciative of that the applicant took that risk before knowing that there was an opportunity for rezoning here, and I'm eager to be a good partner and supportive of this effort and look forward to getting this project over the finish line. So thank you and look forward to the presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin or continue, I'll just ask that you just please reinstate your name and organization for the record.
Yes, I am Judy Gallant from BCLP Land Use Council to Kent River View LLC, the owner of 230 Kent Avenue, which is located in the north side neighborhood of Williamsburg, Brooklyn. Can I have the slides? The next slide, please. As the Chair indicated, this is an application to facilitate the construction of an eight-story building containing 40 apartments, 12 of which would be permanently income restricted under MIH Option 2 with ground floor retail. The necessary land use actions to achieve that are rezoning of Block 2362 from an M14 district to an MX district pairing an M14 and an R7X district, a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area over the entirety of Block 2362, and a zoning text amendment to establish R7X as a designated residence district within MX 8 and CD 1 in Brooklyn, in which MIH is required. May I have the next slide? The development site is located on North First Street between Kent Avenue on the east and River Street on the west. The rezoning area is the entirety of Block 2362, which consists of just two lots. Lot 1, which is a development site, and Lot 3 to its north. Both lots are currently vacant. Can I have the next slide? This aerial photo shows the site and its surrounding context. To the west is the River Ring Project, which was rezoned in 2021 to facilitate the development of a predominantly residential project containing over 1,000 dwelling units, a community facility and commercial space, as well as a three-acre waterfront public open space. Grand Ferry Park, Domino Park, and the northernmost Domino Buildings are shown on the bottom left. Next slide, please. The applicant-owned development site is shown on the left. It's a 5,400-square-foot lot that was formerly occupied by a paint manufacturing facility, as I indicated. The applicant purchased the site in 2017 and remediated at a cost of between $7 and $8 million through the New York State Brownfields Cleanup Program. DEC issued a certificate of completion for that cleanup in 2021. The application proposes to rezone the site to a mixed-use district because the area around it has really changed from a manufacturing area to an increasingly mixed-use area. The proposed MX would facilitate the development of this block at a scale that really provides a rational transition between the 510 and 6, 560 and 710-foot-tall towers that are proposed, that were approved by the city planning and the city council on the River Ring site, on the waterfront, and the five-to-eight-story buildings that are located to the east in the upland blocks, while also allowing manufacturing uses on the site. The other lot in the rezoning area is a 13,380-square-foot vacant The other lot in the rezoning area is a thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot vacant lot owned by Con Edison, and it's shown on the right. May I have the next slide? Land uses in the surrounding area, shown in these photos, include a mix of manufacturing, commercial, and residential uses. East of the site across Kent Avenue are two-seven-story residential buildings. The block to the southeast on the right contains three-to-seven-story mixed-use buildings, as well as fully residential buildings, commercial buildings, and light manufacturing. Next slide, please. To the south, across North First Street, is a four-story commercial building, recently renovated, that contains retail, co-working, some light manufacturing, and a banquet hall. Further to the south, you see the northernmost of the Domino Buildings, which is a two-tower building containing, a two-tower development containing three-hundred-and-thirty-two dwelling units, as well as commercial space and retail. Next slide. Directly north of the site, across Metropolitan Avenue, is a six-story, relatively recently-developed building that contains offices, accessory parking, and a Trader Joe's supermarket, below grade. And further north, you can see on the right, seven- and forty-story residential buildings. So the area really has evolved from manufacturing to contain quite a lot of residential development, and that's what makes sense for the development site. Next slide, please. This is a side-by-side comparison of the existing zoning on the left and the proposed zoning on the right. The rezoning area, as well as the block to its north, were both rezoned in twenty-twenty-one as part of the River Ring application, from M three-one, which is a heavy manufacturing district, to M one-four, which is a light manufacturing district, largely to preclude heavy manufacturing uses in close proximity to both existing and proposed residential uses in the River Ring application and what existed in the community. M one districts are typically mapped as buffers between heavy manufacturing districts or uses and residential or commercial districts and uses. But here, as you can see from the slide, the rezoning area is sandwiched between districts on the east and west that permit residential use. There's a C six-two on the waterfront and an M X district to the east, and between light manufacturing district on the north, where the Trader Joe's was recently developed, no manufacturing there at all, and a heavy manufacturing district on the south that is developed with a retail and banquet hall building, in which there was recent investment. So there really is no use for this pure buffer zone on the development site. The proposed rezoning would maintain the M one-four manufacturing designation, but it would pair it with a residential district, which would facilitate development consistent with the area and at a scale that's already permitted by existing zoning. The proposed rezoning would not change the commercial or manufacturing F A R of two, but by pairing it with the R seven-X, it would permit residential use with M I H at a F A R of six, which is actually less than the maximum F A R permitted on the site today. Today, the maximum F A R under the M one-four is actually six and a half. That's the community facility F A R. So we're really not looking to change the density at all, but just to shift the uses to which that density can be put in a way that's appropriate to what's there. Next slide. This land use map shows that the rezoning is consistent with the character of the area, which, as you can see from the map, is continuing to move away from its manufacturing past. The red, yellow, and peach are commercial, residential, and mixed-use development, respectively. The two River Ring lots shown in gray on the waterfront will soon be peach, whenever they get going, because they'll be mixed-use, and the much less prevalent purple is manufacturing. Next slide, please. This is an illustrative rendering of an eight-story, approximately thirty-three-thousand-square-foot building containing forty dwelling units and thirty-three-hundred square feet of ground floor retail that could be built on the site. Approximately twelve of the building's forty units would be permanently affordable under option two. I already spoke about the sustainability measures that would be incorporated in the building. I would just say, in closing, that the proposed rezoning offers a number of benefits beyond the cleanup that the council member mentioned and the sustainability benefits that he elicited from me. Not only would it result in the activation of a lot that has been vacant for more than ten years, but it would facilitate development of that lot that is in a nature more consistent with the prevailing land use character of the area, and at a scale that is consistent and provides a transition between River Ring and the upland blocks. It would also facilitate development of much-needed housing and much-needed affordable housing in an area in which residential demand is increasing. And by pairing it with an, the M one-four with an R seven-X, it would also allow more community facility uses that are needed to serve the area, such as schools, which, under the M one-four today, are not as of right, but require a special permit from the Board of Standards and Appeals. And finally, the proposed M X zone would preserve manufacturing uses as of right on the Con Ed site, if Con Ed chooses one day to use the site for utility purposes. I have nothing further, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Just one question. You mentioned Con Edison. Have they engaged with the applicant team at all regarding this rezoning?
No, and I should say, you know, I don't represent Con Ed, and I don't speak for them, but the applicant team did reach out to Con Edison multiple times and really got no response. My understanding is that the Department of City Planning did that as well. They held up the application for a little while while trying to get a response from Con Edison, but my understanding from department staff is that they were not, Con Ed was not forthcoming.
Thank you. There, I have no more questions. There being no more questions, your excuse, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify remotely or in person on two-thirty Kent Avenue?
No, Chair, no one has signed up to testify in person or remotely.
Thank you. There being no members of the public who wish to testify on L use eleven and twelve relating to two-thirty Kent Avenue rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Counsel, Land Use, and other council staff, and Sergeant at Arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.